...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Once again, thank you for coming on a beautiful Tuesday evening. Before we get started, I would like to, the board members, our board candidates that are in the room, if you want to introduce yourselves.
Go ahead, Dolores.
Dolores Howard.
Jeff Lawson.
Bill Anderson.
Are there any other board candidates?
Jane Bates.
Sorry. I always forget Jane. Alright, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim.
Hello, everyone, this is now tonight, we're gonna take the board, so we can do this. We've got four representatives tonight, and somebody from each group, introduce yourself. Start with Devon. Could you introduce yourself, Devon?
Good evening, my name is Chuck Decker, with the Ironworkers Impact Program, the Ironworker Management Progressive Action Cooperative Trust, long name, but that is actually the Labor Management Cooperative within the Ironworkers International. And what we do is we put our contractors and ironworkers together in partnerships overseas, to try and, we try and add value to our services, to make our contractors more competitive, and therefore pass that value and savings on to the owner or users of our construction.
Okay?
Okay.
Vince, I'm Vince with CTS Group, and I'm here with St. Louis, really, very, very popular, so thank you very much. Blair?
I'm Alan Blair with CTS Group out of Chesterfield, Missouri. We provide project management services primarily to public and private schools. I'm here tonight with Craig Lindquist, our president, and Lloyd Poker, one of our field people. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight, and look forward to it in person. Thank you.
Paul?
Paul Rockmiller, Rockmiller Construction, just gonna talk about general construction. I brought Bill DC and Todd Rogers from my office with me.
Okay, format tonight, starting with Mr. Decker, and each group will have 15 minutes to speak, and then we'll have a 15-minute question-answer session. I'll just turn the time over to you.
Okay, thank you. And, like I said, we're a cooperative trust that try to add value to ironworkers' service, similar to the other building trades. And, the first thing I'll start about is safety. That's our number-one priority, is safety, no injuries on the job. And, we have a Safety and Health Roundtable that meets twice a year, and we meet with Department of Labor since it is, you know, in June and December. Nationals, we meet with the National Association of Reinforcing Steel Contractors Association, National Association of Metal Armamental Contractors, Specialized Ritters and Rigging Association, National Armamental and Miscellaneous Metals Association, Concrete Reinforcing Steel Institute, the Center for Construction Research and Training, and the Pre-Stress Concrete Institute, along with the American Institute of Steel Construction, and the Associated General Contractors Association, with the Department of Labor and OSHA. And we get together and try and see where we can make improvements, where we can maintain safety, where we can, you know, be at the top shelf with no certified accidents, recordables if you will, and do everything we can to bring all the parties that look, oversee these different parts of the industry, take care of what the industry needs, and do it in the most productive, workmanlike manner, at the safest possible, safest possible way. We have a Safety and Health Department, that department is in charge of taking the information from the roundtable we have, and like I say, it's a national thing. We drive that message down to our members through social media, Twitter, Facebook, email, e-blast, and newsletter, paper newsletter that comes out monthly. Our entire workforce, the ironworkers in St. Louis, are trained, our apprenticeship is four years, entire ironworker workforce in local 396 has OSHA Subpart R training, and OSHA Subpart R training is basically an overview of steel erection, multi-story buildings, bridges, all the type of work we do, and a basic safety overview of what workers can be prepared for when they, when they go on a job site. Our entire ironworker workforce has a minimum of OSHA 10. Now, our apprentices, like I say, get OSHA 10 in Subpart R before they ever go to work, before they ever start. On August the 8th of 2008, our whole membership, 1,700 workers, had a minimum of OSHA 10. All our apprentices that complete their four-year apprenticeship will graduate with an OSHA 30 card, which is the next step up in a lot of places, say, heavy and highway plants, power plants and so forth, you have to have an OSHA 30 to be a foreman. And the OSHA 30 certification, there are still a lot of our journeymen that also have gone back and, and taken care of that upgrade. The National Training Fund is under the supervision of Impact. Five years ago, we had 40-year-old materials, Impact is eight-years-old, and in the last five years, we've developed cutting-edge technology for our classroom training. And you can see all the courses that are listed up there. And, and we have, the guy that's the head of our education department is a PhD from John Hopkins University, that actually works for the Ironworker International, and he designs and details all the schoolbooks and curriculum. And, it covers quite a bit of subject matter. We also train our teachers once a year in Michigan, they go for upgrades and teaching certificates of different types to train the trainer and teach different subject matter like welding and so forth, which I'll get to shortly right here. We also have an apprentice competition that we have every two years, national competition, and take the best apprentice that we have and have a contest, and also they're given a leadership course in that, in that session. North America, we have 13 reg dural advisory boards, and the reason I've got this slide in here is, they're broken up their regions, and Canada, it just came on board now, so the United States and Canada, we have 175 training facilities, teaching a core curriculum. So if you get ironworkers in the East Coast, West Coast, in between, Canada, they're being trained in the same subject matter, all of them everywhere. So if you get an ironworker in St. Louis or New Jersey, they're gonna be trained with the same materials. Welding certification program. All our ironworkers that, we have about a 95% certification coming out of our apprentice school. We have two AWS certified trainers at our facility, that, and to, like I say, this, this thing about adding value to our services for the, our contractors, you know, every six months, the apprentice and our journeymen can turn their book in, what they've been welding, and get that recertified. We take care of all the cost of recertifying the member, if the, if, you know, and that keeps the guy trained, and his certification's up to date, then the contractor doesn't have to spend time and money taking care of his employer, ironworker employees. Reinforcing Department, we have several certifications, post-testing certifications, that our apprentices graduate with those skills and certifications. And, we also, anything that we can help in the way of organizing reinforcing groups in the United States, and what, what is new, what is the best technology to use, we try and put that out and get that, drive that down to our membership. Ironworkers Foreman Training, we have a training class for our, anybody that graduates from our apprenticeship, wants to be a foreman. This particular program got a national award from the AISC, that's American Institute of Steel Construction, and from Kirk, which is the Construction Users Roundtable. In the, in the case of the Construction Users Roundtable, they take in all kinds of contractors all over the United States, union and non-union. We got a national award for this, the Foreman Pocket Guide and the Foreman Training, and we just rolled out, about a month ago, a superintendent class and a, and a general foreman class for ironworkers, to certify them, to, you know, educate them, to be supervisors for our employers, and, you know, take, because that's one of the big, big, big parts of this, is having people able to take responsibility and be a supervisor and run other ironworkers. There, there's, we got the award from Kirk. I'm not sure if you've heard of the FMI Institute, that's the Fails Management Institute, that's nationally known for leadership courses. We have three classes designed at a beginner's level, mid-range level, and, and this one is just, we just ran our pilot courses coming out next week. It's a three-day seminar for leadership skills, and that's to our project managers, ironworker superintendents, ironworker officers, and so forth. And it doesn't have any cost to it, none of these, actually, this is all included in the cost of Impact, provided services that the ironworker puts out to, like I say, add value to our services. Green construction for ironworkers, our ironworkers are taught about green construction, they understand what green construction is. You don't necessarily have to have special skills, it's the same skill set that we have when we build buildings all over the place, but it is an awareness and, that we have got, and our apprentices, every apprentice goes through this course. Training for fabrication and shop ironworkers, we also have rolled out training classes for our shops, fabrication shops, that employ ironworkers, and all these classes are, you know, included in the cost of Impact, so our contractors, we can, they can get cafe-style training at their shops, if they want a course or two, we can set up an apprenticeship program, a shop apprenticeship program for the shops. And we've done that down in Florida, Alborice here has had some training from us in his city, on just specific classes, and some of their employees had helped, you know, put together the textbook and some of the work projects that are in this, in these courses. I'd also tell you that we've just, also are working on a supervisor, it's called a Lead Man Certification for shops, it's the same thing as being a foreman. And then finally, drug testing. We have 70,000 ironworkers in our, in our national database, all over the United States, that's accepted, you know, pretty far and wide. We have 100% drug-free workforce, guy that's in the database here can go to California and work, they look them up, he can go to work there, he can go to work anywhere in the country. And that, that whole part of it is taken care of by Impact, and that, that too is included in our services, there is no charge to the contractor, except within the, you know, ironworker price, price frame. But, the, the actual database and everything, Impact takes care of the whole thing. And we don't have anybody that goes to work as drug testing. So, I wanted to keep it short, I know that I was on 15 minutes, and then there was maybe some question or answers, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Anybody? Okay. Well, I really appreciate your time, that let me, allowing me to come here and speak tonight, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Move on to CTS Group, Vince?
Yeah, you're all good, you're already up. You got your flash screen?
Oh, yeah.
I already got it out, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Pretty cool, you got a letter with that, it's pretty.
Yeah, it's in Arkansas. That's pretty nice.
to mention that, and I overlooked this, but the owner of our company is here, Scott Rowery, with me this evening, so, sorry I forgot to mention this. Don't take it personal. I'm just here to try to explain the generalities of performance contracting, and so, this is probably the first time that I've done this, where I wasn't also pitching people on CTS, so, just give me a funny look, if I go a little bit overboard, but I'm gonna try to keep it generic. What is performance contracting? Just kind of the agenda that I brought. I'm gonna talk a little bit about construction industry trends, some project study results, the advantages of performance design-build, the proposition kids, and how you all have laid it out so far, proven results and path forward. Performance contracting is a form of design-build, and everybody knows what design-build is, it has an energy savings focus, that's one of the primary focuses when we are doing performance contracting, is looking at ways to save the energy long-term. It's performed by energy service companies, which are classified as ESCOs, where many of us are members of the National Association, AESCO, of energy service contractors, it's kind of like an accreditation program that we go through, basically, it's like a license. It's regulated by Missouri state law, which I just passed, a copy to everybody, get one of those. So it's something that's, it's a relatively new law, and a relatively new method of construction, the law was enacted in the state of Missouri in 1997. Scott and one of our partners were actually some of the people that helped write this, this performance contracting statute. It guarantees energy savings over a 15, 10-to-15-year period, so you have long-term energy savings that are guaranteed over the course of the, you know, once the construction's completed, that's something that's ongoing. Along with the reduced energy cost is reduced maintenance costs. And to use the example that if you have a 1985 car or a new 2011, typically that, that newer car is gonna get a lot less maintenance performed on it than an older one is, it's kind of part of the program. And long-term operational savings by the energy savings and the guarantees that's associated with that, you take a little bit less out of your budget each year to produce operating costs, or to spend on operating costs or maintenance costs. Typically, when we look at a school district, if everybody could see that, we'll do a utility analysis on all of your buildings, and we'll benchmark it against all the other school districts and buildings that we've done work on, just to give you a snapshot of where your schools are performing, and that gives us a basis of how we figure the guaranteed energy that we can get as a result of improving your building. This is just an example of some schools that we've done in the area. And, for some of you, some of these, Jim, you know a lot of these things, but some of these things here, like ground source heat pump, which would be like geothermal, rooftop units, so we categorize that, because it's not fair to, somebody has a system that's maybe not as advanced as another, and we can't go in and say, hey, you're wasting a lot of energy here, if you've got a system, it's just not similar, so we'll benchmark it against other things that are available. This is just a little trend analysis that I got off of the ASBR DESI site, and it shows actually, the green graph shows energy cost per student in Farmington District, from 2007 through 2011, this is the state average, and it actually shows that you all improved in 2009, that you're actually running a little bit below the state average in saving energy cost per student. Now, I must say that the overall average in Missouri isn't so great, so there's still probably a lot of room for improvement there, but it's just something that was public information, that we thought we'd read to show you, give you an idea of where you are. This is a similar slide, and your numbers are represented in the green, and this is energy cost as a percentage of your supplies. If you all go through your budgets, you know, it's probably teacher salaries and benefits, and some of those other things that are associated with cost, and energy and utility bills simply come under the supplies category, so it's another statistic compared to the state average. And, looks like you're still looking below there at that one time in '07-'08, so I don't know what you all did in '09, but something probably to improve those figures. This is a study that McGraw-Hill did on construction, and some of the price increases that owners have been experiencing, 92% of them, of public owners are experiencing price increases. Year over year, they averaged 13%. And there's a little representation of what the increases were, from 10% to 20%. And a lot of owners are seeking over the, almost 60% side, that they were looking for ways to save money as these costs continue to increase on construction projects. 40% said that they needed to shorten the construction cycles, so it seems kind of something that happens quite often in construction, is not only is the price going up, these projects take longer and longer to complete, as they become more complex. And 5% said plant reefer. This is a study that was done by Penn State and Construction Industries Institute, 351 projects they took surveys on, and cost for performance contracting was 4.5% less than construction management, and 6% less than design-built build, overall. This is a pretty important one, Vince, again, construction speed, or how much time it takes to do construction, so, performance contracting was 7% and 12% faster than those other methods. Again, it's a project can be completed in a timeline, it's very, very important for schools, because you've got a short window of opportunity when the students are out for the summer, so we feel like this is an important thing that needs to be mentioned. Delivery speed talks about, not just the actual construction, but part of the design phase, and statistically, performance contracting 23% and 33% faster, so again, seem to be able to get a lot done under this method, because there's just one entity involved in it typically, there's not a lot of finger pointing that can happen in the process. And quality exceeded at all levels, basically, performance contracting was never a quality Some of the benefits of doing it is that we do an innovative team approach, we work with the architect, with your finance people, with local contractors, I think Scott could speak to that, but we've worked with a lot of local subcontractors, sometimes we've worked with a local general contractor like Paul, on projects that we do performance contracting on, so, we really could come in and unify the project, so it's one team, working together, achieving the same goals. We work, again, with the architect, the project is not based on just price only, because we see an awful lot of projects that they get based on price, and then we go in and do an energy audit on a project, five, six years down the road, and they find out that their newest building is costing them the most to operate, because all they really thought about was getting that low cost at the beginning of the process. And again, we have a guaranteed operating cost, part of that savings is ongoing. And the savings are measured and verified, we actually have some people in our company that their sole job is to check on all the projects that we've done over the years, take a look at the utility usage, make sure that they're meeting our guarantee, because the last thing that Scott wants to do is have to write a shortfall check. The way that this works, is that this guaranteed energy savings, let's say that we guarantee, we do a million-dollar project, and the energy savings is guaranteed at $50,000 a year, five, six years from now, we conduct an audit at the district request, and it's found that we only saved you $40,000 in a particular calendar year, then we're obligated by the statute to write a check for the difference. That goes on for 15 years, you know, for the length of the contract, so at any time, if that energy savings doesn't come out, we're on the hook for it. I think we've never had to do a check yet, write a shortfall check, but it's just the way that the method works. Probably the key things that I wanted to discuss tonight, is that early, early on in the performance contract method, you all will know a price. When the RFP is issued, and all the ESCOs respond to it, you're gonna get a price, and that's the price, upfront, before you begin anything else, you're gonna know as poor as an entity of the district, how much this project's gonna cost. No change orders during the construction process, it's, it's just the way PC operates. We've been in business, I think, for over 12 years, we've never had a change order that wasn't asked us by school district, so we've never gone to a district and said, hey, we charge you for a change order. In fact, I had a superintendent that used this method last year, southwest Missouri, Cassville, Missouri, and he chose this method of construction, because he had looked at all the projects that he had done, either in-house or traditional methods, and the spread between what the bids were received at, and what he actually paid, was a 7.25% spread over a three-year period. Now, he was a small district, that wasn't a lot of money, but still, 7% is a lot of money between what you're told the project's gonna be and what you actually pay. So that's one of the huge benefits, as I see of performance contracting, is you go upfront. It's the fastest delivery method out there, and with performance contracting, all the accountability is with the performance contractor. Because we can basically take ownership of that whole project, we can't say, well, it was somebody else's fault that something didn't happen, basically, buck stops your bus, and there's that 15-year relationship or commitment that we have to maintain that savings, so, three minutes. And local contractors, we try to use many local contractors as we can. Vince? Three, three minutes, okay. I'll speed it up here. I went through your list on proposition kids, some of the things that were on your list, and I just wanted to kind of briefly show some pictures, these are all projects that were done under performance contracting. I'll kind of go through them sort of fast, since I'm running out of time here. As you can see, it's a lot more than just energy savings, we can really do all forms of construction. I think when I looked at your list, the only thing we haven't done, or that hasn't been done under performance contracting, was tennis court resurfacing and a bus tracking system. But pretty much, for the most part, all of the things that, that are on the proposition kids list have been done several times under performance contracting. These are just some slides showing some of the stuff that, that had been done under that statute, for that destruction method. Get through these really fast, it's, I'm running out of time, but basically, what we would do under performance contract, discuss the needs and the goals of the district, publish an issue, and a RFP would be a competitive bid process, where other ESCOs would come in, give you a number. You receive and review all the proposals, take a selection, not necessarily by the lowest price, but what you price, but what you all feel is the best value and the best proposal that's put in front of you. It's fine-tuned and designed, budgeted, contracts approved, construction begins. And with that, I thank you, and I'll take any questions that you have. Anything at all? Appreciate yours.
Yeah, I had one. Sure. How, you said several slides there about how much faster performance contracting is. How can you do that?
Couple of reasons. Typically, we design in a very, very much quicker timeline because we're not basically on a clock for design work. We know that we have a limited window to get that done. And so we basically, I don't know, Scott, do you have a?
Yeah, the designing starts right up front. It's not a matter of cleaning, putting, getting prices put together. So when we would come in to kind of go through the buildings, the guys that would be coming in here would actually be the ones putting it together to about eighty percent design and use. We have architectural services, mechanical engineering services to get those involved.
Are your contractors, are they already picked by you, or do you use local contractors?
I can't speak for all performance contractors, but at least in our situation, we always ask the school district for a list first. Some districts, some areas, I mean, there was a project recently in Jefferson County, and they had a pretty strong mandate there that they wanted a hundred percent local contractors. And I think we adhered to that, maybe of, you know, a rare exception. I mean, as long as it's in the best interest of the school district, we have a local contractor that comes in way higher than the guys that we have used in the past in other areas, we're going to certainly communicate that to you, make sure. And we've had some instances where districts have recommended a local contractor of some sort. And after the project, they're like, boy, we wish we wouldn't have used that particular contractor, and that happens. But let's say that part about working as a team, we really work, you know, throughout the whole process as a team. And again, in my opinion, and of course, I'm biased because I'm in this business, but to me, sitting where you folks are, you know, the fact that you've got that fifteen-year guarantee on the energy savings keeps a link to that contractor, whereas it's not a, you know, hey, we do this job and we move on to the next one. I mean, we have a philosophy, customers for life. Once we do business with you, we want to continue. And we have a large percentage of people that we've done business with on multiple phases of projects. And to speak highly to anybody in the construction business, we have to be customers doing something right. So, all right?
Vince, how are your costs, project-related costs conveyed to the owner? Is it an open book process, or how do you guys generally work that?
It can be, and I think it has been in some cases, but that's one of the other things is since it's not a fee-based, you know, we don't, we don't charge a percentage over something. And so there's, the incentive for us is we really have one bite at the apple. We have one chance to come before the board. Every ESCO in this RFP process has a chance to come in with the best project at a good price. And if we don't get it, that's the end of the story, and another, other person gets it. So there's no incentive for us to raise the price up because it's not a percentage over the price of project, if you will, as some methods can be. So it depends. Sometimes contingency fees are an open book, and I think that we've.
Yeah, it was already required, open book. And so they had a process, and we had follow. Some school districts require that, others we do a lump sum price.
Right. Yeah, so we're, we're very flexible.
Yes, sir. I have two questions. First, how would you arrive at the price for your project, your overall project? Is it percentage based on the total?
Yeah, and I'll be straight up with you. I'm a salesperson, so I'm the pretty face that goes out, meets and greets, gets the relationships going. There's a number of about five or six really smart guys in our company that are engineers and estimators. They're the ones that really put the nuts and bolts together, come up with this stuff. If I, God forbid, if I was the one who was assuming the pricing, we'd probably be out of business.
What it is basically, it's the sum of our subs, and then we have our overhead and our profit. And it's a fixed cost.
It's a, it is a fixed cost.
Yes.
Okay, secondly.
Yes, sir.
On the fifteen-year contract, that is only for the cost savings on energy?
Correct.
That's the only connection you would have with the district that had.
What we typically do is we come to an agreement with the board or with the school district of what the operational savings and the maintenance savings will be. And we, we basically do a best estimate on past experience, past projects that are similar. And that's just more or less an agreement that we come to, but that's not actually figured into the energy savings. The only thing by the law that, you know, that we can guarantee is the energy savings. But that's a great question. Yes, ma'am.
And in terms of the energy savings, quantifiable, at what point in the process is that determined? Is that early?
Typically, what we, typically, it's a great question. Typically, we look at one, one full year of utilities to base, to get a base basis. And then, once the project is complete, the new systems are put in place, we start, we do another audit, a full calendar year after the new things are put in place. We come back with that audit results, show it to the district, and then the district says, okay, yeah, you save. We tend to be a little bit on a conservative side. And it's ironic because some of our competitors go in and they say, hey, well, we've written shortfall checks, and, you know, we're upfront about it. In our mind, that, that makes it look like you didn't really design the project right because you didn't guarantee the amount. But that's, you know, that's just the difference between different performance contracting companies.
So is that guaranteed savings determined at the same point when they're evaluating the price for the project?
Absolutely. Yeah. When the guaranteed price comes in, so is the annual savings. And just as an example, I know that we did a project in Cape Girardeau, and I think it was seven or eight years ago, we saved them twice what the guarantee amount was on their high school. It's just a few-year-old building, and it's just burning energy crazy. And they had another big construction project that they did a couple of years ago. And one of the board members that is CCS guys, you know, they supposedly guaranteed us, you know, $29,000 a year in energy savings. I think the first year savings, Scott, was like $71,000. So we went back and performed an audit, and we found out even six, seven years after the equipment was put in with it getting a little old, we were still saving them like $67,000 a year, and the guarantee was only, you know, 29. So the board member was satisfied that we had, we had lived up to our part of the contract. But it's, it's a nice, it's a, it's a nice security blanket for, for the school district to know that if energy costs ever get out of line, you have somebody to come to and that can answer that for you. And we have a very, very sharp group of people that do that measurement and verification for us, and they're really good with the numbers. I had one young man, it was interesting, he noticed that a school district that we did was falling way behind in their energy savings, and found out that they had a wrestling coach that was keeping the gym at eighty-five degrees all winter. So the wrestlers were training and breathing hot air in. And we had to say, hey, wait a minute, you're operating this building way out of the spec that we, that we wanted you to. Superintendent put a stop to that. The guy, hey, make him wear some sweaters. It's good. Thank you all very much for having us. And. See you again.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
Cheers. No? Cheers? Cheer?
Craig. Would you like a one?
Cheers.
Please stay on the side. Please stay on the side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All's well that ends well.
Can I introduce yourself?
Again, my name is Craig Linquist. I'm with CCS Group here with Alan Laird and Lloyd Poker from our office. I'll be talking kind of through the quick little presentation, but Alan and Lloyd will be available for any questions you all might have. We're here to talk about project management. And what I first want to touch on is that during the design and construction process, owners have rights and responsibilities regardless of what project delivery method is chosen. Those rights and responsibilities must be effectively addressed in order to protect the owner's interests throughout the process. We believe that this is best handled by a construction professional with experience in the process, who is either a district employee or an agent working for the district, not a contractor. A contractor has a different contractual relationship with an owner than an agent does. And the agent has a fiduciary duty to its principal. So that's an important distinction. There are three basic project delivery approaches. The conventional approach, which is the design, and then you bid it, and then you build it. In that approach, the owner holds a single contract with the architect and a single contract with the general contractor. In the mid-'90s, the Missouri Legislature approved a, or passed a statute that allows general contractors to perform construction management for public owners. In that process, the owner must hold all the contracts. The construction manager is not allowed to guarantee anything except its own fee. And essentially, in the construction management process, the construction manager is, the public owner is outsourcing the supervision of the various prime subcontractors to the construction manager. And then the third process is the design-build, Vince's, a version of which Vince has just talked about, where the contractor is responsible for both the design and the construction. And I want to go through a little bit with the risks as we see them of the, of the three, three processes. Under the conventional process, one of the main risks that an owner has is making sure that everything that they have on their wish list or their needs list makes it into the design. And that's what the folks from Bonn Wolf will, will head up that process, making sure that they understand everything that you all are trying to accomplish with your, with your process. And it's important to get those, to make sure that that communication takes place effectively and everything gets in the documents. The next risk in, in the conventional approach is the fact that the bidding documents must be effectively coordinated. They, if the electrical drawing shows light poles, or if the civil drawing shows light poles going in a parking lot, the electrical drawing needs to show those same light poles so that the electricity can be connected to it. And again, that's something that, that's your design professionals can take care of, but that's a risk that the owner undertakes because during the construction process, if the, if they haven't been coordinated, that contractor is going to look to the owner for, for compensation for that because they don't have a contract with the designer. The third major risk that I see, and one of the things I haven't mentioned, is CCS Group does a lot of, in addition to doing project management, we do dispute resolution services for people who have gotten into some sort of dispute or an argument in the construction process. And what, and I do a lot of that work. And what, what I see a lot of times is that construction contracts are not fairly administered. And they're, some lawyer tries to make them one-sided. You're more apt to end up with a, with a dispute or a problem that, that again falls to the owner that needs to be taken. So those are the, those are the main risks of the conventional design, and they're all pretty manageable, particularly with a good design professional on board and a good project manager on board. Construction management has a whole different set of risks. In addition to the first two elements of the design and the bidding documents, because the owner has to hold contracts with each of the prime subcontractors, if they get into a dispute about who has that in their price, and both of them say they don't have it in their price, the owner's going to be left holding the bag, figuring out who's going to pay for that. And they're either going to tell one of the contractors to pay for it, potentially get a claim back, or they're going to have to write a change order for it. There's a risk of default by any of those contractors. Anytime you have all those, those contracts out there, if one of those contractors defaults, you're going to have to go to a bonding company to get them to pick up the slack for that contractor. It's a very time-consuming process, usually delays the project significantly anytime a contractor defaults. You risk schedule delays. If one of the prime contractors doesn't perform, it delays the other prime contractors. Those prime, those that have been delayed will come to the owner looking for compensation for that. One of the other things we'd like to point out is that as a public entity, any contract that the district enters into over a certain amount of money, which I don't know exactly what it is, must be backed up by a payment of performance bond. And so each of these prime subcontractors who are bidding to, to the project would have to provide a payment of performance bond. That precludes some of the smaller contractors, who may be very well-qualified local contractors, from, from bidding on the work because they may not have that bonding capacity. Whereas if they're working for a general contractor, in all likelihood, the general contractor is the only one who has to provide a bond, and then they can end up doing that work. In summary, on the, as a construction management approach, the owner basically assumes the role of the general contractor. They delegate supervision of the contractors to the CM. And if the CM does a good job, things can go okay. If the CM falters, the owner is going to have some, some issues to deal with. On the design-build, the main risk that we see in the design-build process is that all of the owner's input has to be made upfront. I, I have been a developer and owner, and design-build was an option open to me, but it was not particularly attractive to me because I wanted to make sure that I got all of my input into the design. And depending on how much design is completed by the owner upfront to what you, to what you tell the design-build bidders that you want, unforeseen scope and quality issues can arise. If you don't get all that design in, if it's not specified in your design basis, it's unlikely that the contractor is going to offer to do something more expensive than that design basis would allow him to do. So that's a very risky option, in our opinion. Without adequate oversight, design-build can have a higher cost than a lower quality, and it's something you really need to pay attention to. And as Vince mentioned, performance contracting is a form of design-build. To project management per se, major corporations and some large school districts have a full-time project management staff. Most school districts don't because they don't do enough construction. Without that qualified project management staff, we suggest that an agent of the owner, project manager can fill that role. What is it that a project manager does? Prior to, you know, pre-design, they need to really get themselves familiar with what the objectives and goals of the owner are, scope, cost, quality, and schedule. If, if the project manager's onboard before the architect is hired, they can help communicate the project executive objectives to the architects in an RFQ code. They can assist in preparation of the AE contract. They can provide conceptual budgeting for allocation of proposed bond issuance funds. You all have a great document here that really sets all that out. And that's the kind of, kind of work that a project manager could do as well. And maybe most importantly, setting out a design and construction logistics plan for the overall project. A day lost in design is the same as a day lost the day before you're going to open a school. Every day counts the same. And knowing what it's going to take to achieve all of your objectives is really critical. And that's where the project manager should be doing his job. During the design phase, the project manager ought to be collaborating with the owner and the design team to, to develop a design. Without that qualified project management staff, we suggest that an agent of the owner, project manager, can fill that role. What is it that a project manager does? Prior to, you know, pre-design, they need to really get themselves familiar with what the objectives and goals of the owner are: scope, cost, quality, and schedule. If the project manager's onboard before the architect is hired, they can help communicate the project executive objectives to the architects in an RFQ code. They can assist in preparation of the AE contract. They can provide conceptual budgeting for allocation of proposed bond issue funds. You all have a great document here that really sets all that out, and that's the kind of work that a project manager could do as well. And maybe most importantly, setting out a design and construction logistics plan for the overall project. A day lost in design is the same as a day lost the day before you're going to open a school. Every day counts the same, and knowing what it's going to take to achieve all of your objectives is really critical. And that's where the project manager should be doing his job. During the design phase, the project manager ought to be collaborating with the owner and the design team to develop a design schedule that meets the owner's objectives. Typically, the project manager would be providing budget estimates at each phase of the design, knowing how much-- in order for an owner to make good, cost-effective decisions, they need to know where they stand from a budget standpoint. Can we afford to put that wood paneling in? Do we want to put that wood paneling in? We're working on a project right now where the designer put in wood paneling that was going to cost $150 per square foot. Those kinds of things need to be known so that good, effective decisions can be made. And then value engineering is tossed around a lot, and a lot of people talk about value engineering, something out of the plans at the end of the project. That's not value engineering. That's hatchet work on the scope. The only way you can value engineering anything out after the construction documents are done is to take scope out. Value engineering needs to take place collaboratively with the design team during the early phases of the design. That's when you have your major impact on cost without affecting your final quality. During the construction documents phase, collaborate with the owner and the design team on constructability. That is often used together with value engineering. Constructability is how those construction documents go together and make it as cost-effective as possible to construct the end product. And that work can be done, again, collaboratively during the construction document phase. Project manager would typically collaborate with the design professionals to develop the front-end documents, the business terms and conditions of the specifications. What does that schedule need to be? How much time are you going to give the contractor? You don't want to tell the contractor, if you're planning on holding classes on August 15th, you don't want to tell the contractor he's got until August 14th to get the project done. All of that stuff needs to be thought through, and the owner's goals and objectives dealt with. Communicating with the municipal and regulatory agencies during the construction documents phase, towards the end of it and into the bidding phase, allows the project to proceed smoothly while-- without holdups by the regulatory agencies. Down here, you may not have the same problems we do up in the St. Louis area, Metropolitan College Sewer District, and some other regulatory agencies who can take what seems like eons to approve something. But you need to get it that early and work collaboratively with the design professionals to do that. During the bidding phase, the project manager would develop the language for the RFP, solicit interest from the bidding community, collaborate with the design team to field the questions that the bidding contractor is going to have as they bid the work, and then document those answers so that all of the bidders are bidding the same thing, issuing addenda with, you know, in conjunction with the design team. Coordinating the bidding for the owner. As an owner, you want to open these bids publicly. The project manager should assist you in the development of the construction contract, should final negotiate the construction contract, develop communication forms and processes to maximize control of cost, quality, and schedule. Those are the big three, right behind safety. And as Chuck mentioned early, making sure that the contractor has a really effective safety program is in everybody's best interest as well. Change happens on construction projects. It can be because somebody didn't think of something. It can be because there's an error in the construction documents. It could be because nobody-- you know, something happened underground that nobody foresaw. Managing that change is key to maintaining budgets for the owner, and that's something that your project manager should be doing for you. Managing the schedule is key. Simply turning the project over to a general contractor and saying, "Give me a schedule that shows me that you're going to get this done," we find ineffective, and we suggest that the owner take a very proactive role in working with the contractor to manage the schedule. Administering the construction contract, making sure that everybody is performing in accordance with the terms and conditions of their contract is another thing that the project manager is responsible for. Managing the payment process to make sure that the process is done on a timely basis, is done fairly, yet protects the owner's interest to make sure that the owner doesn't overpay at some point during the project. Why do I need a project manager? This is my last slide. There are no do-overs in design and construction. You only get one chance to get it right, and if any big things happen, you're going to have problems. They can be very expensive. It's not a place for on-the-job training. And lastly, an effective project manager will save you money, at the bottom line, even after considering the fees. The only point I'll make here: Don't hire a project manager to wear two hats. Make sure that the project manager that you hire is representing only your interests as the board and the district. So that's our canned presentation. Can we answer any questions for anybody?
I'd like to ask one. On this $17 million bond issue, and you're the project manager, what kind of fees would you be charging to oversee this?
A little bit of a loaded question, but I'll go back to my last slide, and that is that I'll guarantee you that you shouldn't hire us or any other project manager if you think those fees are going to increase your bottom-line cost. Your bottom-line cost will be decreased because you've hired an effective project manager, whether that's an agent like us, or whether that's an employee of the district. Somebody needs to be managing your interests during this process, and simply foregoing that isn't a way to save money. In fact, we think we can hook you up with as many owners as you want who have been through this process, so we'll tell you that it did save money. The answer to your question is in the 2% to 3% range.
I mean, I wouldn't-- both haven't-- I know they've never-- the school district has never had a project manager before than I do, but that's--
I can tell you one other-- one supplement that Craig just said. We never, ever price our work as a percentage of construction because it isn't in the district's best interest. Frankly, it isn't in our best interest. We will look at the scope and nature and schedule of the projects that you want to undertake and propose a fee based upon the needs that your district has, and we work against a "not to exceed price." More often than not, our fees come in well under what we project at the start of the project. More often than not, we also end up doing additional projects for our clients that they feel we've been effective, we've helped, we've saved money on the prior projects, we can help with these things as well, and we do, and we still--
Well, the only reason I asked that question, I mean, you're setting a budget to do, and this would be something that'd have to be put in your budget if this is what your district is going to go by, you know? I was just kind of curious of what kind of money you'd be looking at, so.
And that fee includes all of the time we spend. That's not 2% to 3% profit.
Right.
That is all of our time, and we, you know, we bill for our services basically based on the effort that's going to be required, as Alan said, not some percentage of the project.
One thing that site logistics could be a real issue in this project. How do you guys work through that?
Generally, we would start working with probably Jim and yourself, and sit down and look at what all of these things are going to-- things that have to be done and what they're going to need. And we would put together a preliminary logistics plan, schedule, that would end up going into the front-end documents of your bids. You don't want to leave anything up to the contractors to decide how they're going to go about executing their work, if it can have an impact on the school district's operations. So we work very closely with the entire project team to make sure that the district's objectives are taken care of, including where is the trailer going to sit? Where are we going to allow construction access? Where's the construction fence going to go? All of those kinds of things need to be looked at early on in the project. It should be in the bid documents themselves.
Just to add to that, just to give you an example, just completed work last-- year before last, started in 2010 down at St. James. They had all open corridors between their classrooms, and part of the project was enclosing all of those corridors. It was a huge logistic nightmare for the district. They didn't know how to handle it. We met with the contractor. We met with the-- we had the fire department there. We had the police department there. We had everybody there together collectively and defined what would be emergency access routes through construction, and then we maintained those emergency access continually through the entire construction process. When things got completed, then we had another coordination meeting with all of these entities involved so that as we went to the next section on how, you know, so when the fire-- if the firemen pulled up to the job, they knew how to get through the construction site, they knew how to get children in and out. This was an elementary school, and everything worked out extremely well, but the district per se just didn't know how to, you know, how to handle that. What we did-- much of this was put in the contract, in the bid documents upfront so that all of the contractors knew this was how they had to bid the work. This was what was going to be enforced.
Okay.
Hey, I got one more question. Do you have anybody that lives in the Farmington School District that works for you, or if you worked on any schools in the area, in the surrounding counties?
In the surrounding counties. Mr. Poker is a lifelong Jefferson County resident. He's done work down in Jefferson, R7.
North County.
North County School District. So we're very familiar with the general area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
The outline that we're going to have up on the screen is similar to, I think, what was passed out in the Board Packet, so this is just nothing that you don't have in your Board Packet. Yeah, just go ahead. Mike's out, Paul Brockmiller. Done with Brockmiller Construction, and we're here to talk about general construction. So that's really not even pertinent. So more or less, it's an education process. Talking about general construction, and I don't care which of these performance contracting, construction management, what you're talking about, what you're going to be talking about is individuals. You can have the best company, but if they don't have the right individual running that job, it's not going to reflect on the quality of the project they're trying to deliver. So that's one of the things to keep in mind when you're talking as I go through on this. Being a school district, you're going to be under the Missouri State Statute for bidding process. If you're an owner, you can go out and hire a general contractor upfront. You're regulated by having to go through a bidding process. And in doing so, the method that's used a lot of times is the general construction method. One of the keys to the general construction method is you're able to get input into this job upfront. When you put out a set of bidding documents, you know exactly what you are getting, and you're going to be having influence, sitting down with the architect, being able to make sure that your needs are met. Now, when those documents are put out, you'll put this out, and then you'll solicit bids coming in, and you'll be able to open these bids up to see what are your lowest bids. So at that point in time, instead of just having an upfront VEG number, you're able to get detailed firm numbers that you'll be able to write a contract on based upon the set of documents that you put out, saying exactly what you want. So rather than, "We want a school building, okay, it's going to be this amount," but you aren't quite sure what you're getting in there. You're going to know what you're getting because you provided the documents with the assistance of the architect in getting that material. So when you open the bid, you're going to be able to look and see what the lowest bid is. Now, we're going to talk about that in a little bit. The lowest bid, a lot of times, is not your best bid, but at least you can see what is out there, and you know where those numbers are, so you know how they stack up. Single-source responsibility. When you're running a job, as I mentioned, people. The job site superintendent is the most important person on that job. He's the one there coordinating the day-to-day activities, the one that's going to be responsible for the construction schedule, the quality of construction, and coordinating all activities involved on that job. By doing the general construction, you have that one single point of contact that's at the job site every single day. And then also, when the job is complete, if you have a warranty issue, you can make that one phone call. It's that general contractor's responsibility to follow up and make sure that any of those items are completed under warranty. And warranty is going to happen. Things are going to break. It's just a part of it, making sure that you have one person you can contact to make sure that that happens. By doing it this way, you have one contractor that's responsible for getting all of the subcontractors together. When he is putting together his bid, he's responsible for going out, soliciting bids, getting the bids coming in, and putting together his best numbers. I'm going to talk about that. What is the best number here just a little bit? It was mentioned earlier, the ability to incorporate more local participation. By doing the general construction method, there's lots of contractors in this area that we work with all the time that are more than qualified, yet if they have to go out, as Craig mentioned, by the state law mandating having to provide performance and payment bonds, they're not able to. They just don't do it that often. Getting performance and payment bond usually takes an annual audit of your accounting records and everything. There's just not a big need for it, so if you're going to have all the subs directly do it, you're going to probably keep quite a bit of local participation out in the highest quality. The general contractor is one person there. I feel that they're going to take responsibility for that project. They're going to take ownership for that project, that they're-- it's their reputation. When you work on-- I've always said this with school district administrators, you can't ever afford, especially in this area, to not do well on one job because when administrators get together, they all talk, and they know the good and the bad about whether it be construction or other things that go in the school districts. So I feel you're going to get the highest quality there. Okay, what's going to make a successful project? And some of this, Craig, I think stole some of my notes on it, so you've heard some of this already.
That's the reason I went first, Paul.
The most important thing about the project is you, working with your architect to make sure you know what you are getting on it, and to make sure you tell him what you're getting, and then to understand it. Sit down with those drawings. Be aware of, "Where am I getting outlets? Am I getting smart boards? What type of case work am I getting?" That's what-- you have to be the one to tell the contractor what you want. If you provide a set of documents, then, you know, the contractor bids it, yet all of a sudden something comes out, "Well, I didn't know." Well, you told the architect, so that's what, you know, we were bidding. We don't know what your thinking is, what your concepts are. And in doing that, providing quality documents. When people always get this misconception, change orders. Well, a good set of documents is going to keep change orders from happening. If there's nothing for a contractor to claim, well, that's not shown on the drawings. He can't make that change order, Clark. Now, with that being said, we're all human. There's no way we can build a perfect set of buildings. Architect can design a perfect building, and you, the owner, aren't going to get done saying, "Oh, I wish I'd done something differently." Well, I always equate it to a triangle, and somewhere within that triangle, we all come together and we operate as a team on it. And that's-- There's no way we can build a perfect set of drawing, of building. Architect can design a perfect building, and you, the owner, aren't going to get done saying, "Oh, I wish I'd done something differently." Well, I always equate it to a triangle, and somewhere within that triangle, we all come together and we operate as a team on it. And that's what's important on for a successful project. Now, the other thing is, I've mentioned before, hey, low bid. When you get the low bid, too many owners out there saying, "Well, that's the low bid. We've got to use that right away. That's, we've got to use that one. Low bid, we can't, we can't pass up the dollars on it." Biggest mistake you're going to make a lot of times. A lot of times, the low bid is a good bid, but there's a lot of the circumstances out there where it's not. What's going to, what's going to make a low bid not good? Well, the contractor, he missed something on it. We bid a job one time, the guy missed the entire second floor. Yet he still, he still wanted to try to do that job. Now, what would have happened to the owner when you're using a bid that's that low? Something in the end is going to come out. What is the contractor's reputation? Can, are they able to perform? What is their quality in the past? What is their dispute resolution? Are they going to be looking for change orders? There was a contractor that just went out of business, better than St. Louis. His philosophy on bidding it, it was known within the industry, he was going to, on bid day, he was going to go to his hard cost, he was going to bid the job below cost. Then he was going to shop all his numbers around, completely unethical, and then he was going to try to make his profit up on change orders. That's the reputation the guy had. Now, there's an auction for his equipment, but if the owner doesn't know to ask those questions, he's not going to blow, no, he's going to look at the low number. The quality of the superintendent, most important man on the job, that's another successful way. Find out who will be running that job, what are his references on it. Quality of the subcontractors. Another big question to ask, how much of the work will the general contractor self-perform? There's some general contractors out there, they're nothing but, they take numbers, they just manage. Don't self-perform anything, really aren't taking a lot of ownership of that job. They're nothing but paperwork pushers. Find out how much the general contractor is going to self-perform, but then find out the quality of his subcontractors. Even your best general contractors are, are going to perform no more than probably forty percent of the work themselves. There's going to be the electrician, the plumber, the painter, the drywaller, flooring guy. All those are subcontractors. There's, not me, there's just general contractors don't do it. You have people that specialize in that one. You need those specialty contractors. But then find out, who are the general subcontractors? There was a job, we bid not too long ago, we warned the owner upfront, "Please look at your electrician. The gentleman's not qualified. He's already has prevailing wage violations." Well, he went under on the job. General contractor had to end up paying it. There are large prevailing wage violations. Who's going to benefit from that? We bid another job that, there was a roofing contractor that never bid a job before, wasn't even certified, yet the other contractor used him. Find out who you're, what are the quality they're going to do? Because even though the general, you told your contractor, the general contractor, he might get that job done, doing the best he can, but what is the quality you're truly getting? So, the subcontractors are a huge part of it, in addition to your suppliers, the quality of sub suppliers, making sure you're getting the products you want on it. Then, representation during construction. Craig talked about this. The school district needs somebody to represent them that knows about construction, that can ask the questions, that can look out for your best interests on it. That when you're evaluating these, you can get a reference letter. Not many people are going to send out a reference letter with a bad reference on it. It's someone's responsibility to get into it and truly find out who these people are. During construction, that can be walking through that construction project to make sure, architect can't be there all the time, to make sure that they're getting everything every day. Even you pick that good contractor, there's things that happen sometimes. There's oversight, just someone, another set of eyes on it, and then a fair decision-maker. So, nothing is worse from a contractor on a job, but when you hit, there is a glitch on the drawings, we're going a hundred miles an hour, and then all of a sudden, something's not coordinated on the drawings. We don't get an answer. We need someone to step in on the owner's behalf and say, "This is what we want. Let's move on with it. Let's keep this job going. We can't afford to wait five days to get a decision like this last winter. We couldn't have had a better winter. We needed to take advantage of every day. We would have had something that needed a decision, we would have been waiting. That's time lost." Okay, what, what are the potential problems? We talked about the quality of your contractor, not getting a good general contractor. It can make your life terrible, the entire job, and you'll be paying for it not just upfront, you'll be paying for it for years. One of the best compliments we ever received was another school district that we finished second on it. And the owner told us later on, we were already on-site doing a large commercial job, we finished second on the next bid that came out. When we got done with our job, the owner said, "You know, I want to compliment you guys when you had the two jobs side by side. They had a lower number than you did, but that money we thought we were saving upfront by going with that low bidder, between having to pay numerous change orders and the job running almost a year behind schedule, that money, we blew through that money." They said, "It was a big mistake. Didn't get us the job, but it was a great compliment, and we made an owner a great reference in the future on it." Potential not having the right subcontractors on it. Your exposure to change orders. If you don't have a good set of documents, you're setting yourself up for a change order. You can't expect a contractor to bid a solid surface top, yet you don't show that on the drawings. You know, just the nature of the beast, if you're going to be, try to be a competitive contractor, you're not just going to throw the highest quality at it when you rely on the documents to tell what needs to be there. And then, if you don't understand the drawings, and you don't have someone representing you that understands the drawings, you're going to get done and say, "Well, hold on. I didn't realize I was, we were getting this." So, you didn't get what, what was expected, because you didn't understand. So, really, that's education on general construction. It's, I'm not going to sit here and say one means is better than the other. It depends on what you're looking for, what your needs are, how you're wanting to put it together. I do think, though, that the school district really needs someone to look after their best interests, no matter which way you go, because that's going to be, one of the things I've seen here tonight, I've seen some questions, haven't seen a whole lot of questions from behind the table, and that's where someone over here needs to make sure you guys are fully understanding, and they can communicate that to you. So, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
It's not coincidence I've had this question, but, where you were talking about quality of work from subcontractors. Would the subcontractors that are getting workers, would they use union workers from our local area?
That depends on the general contractor. Like I said, I'm talking general construction, not, not me as a firm right now. Predominantly, this area has been a more unionized workforce. Not going to say if they're having, it's, it's not a mixed, it's not a hundred percent union workforce, depends on who you're going to get. I will say this, union people talking earlier, we have seen bid documents before stating, you know, the amount of training programs you want, to make sure you're getting trained workers, that's, we've seen in bid documents before, you know, same ways as mentioned with Craig or one of the other gentlemen earlier, about, you know, how much local participation do we want? We've seen the same thing with, not saying union per se, but the training of it, which in my opinion makes a, a big difference, making sure you get that quality worker. Yes?
Paul, I have a question on general contractors, subcontractors. Would they all be required to pay prevailing wage?
State law, you have to do it.
State law.
And that's, and that's one thing, another thing to ask your general contractor. How do they make sure that they're having to pay prevailing wage? With the pay requests that are turned in each time, there's, there's a certified prevailing wage form. It's a, you know, if you forge it, that's a felony. So, the contractor, he's the one who's ultimately responsible for it, making, having somebody check those prevailing wage forms, make sure that they're, they're being filled out promptly. And then, like I said, then there's also a second pair of eyes. When we have worked with the program manager before, they call it before, "Hey, let's, let's check this rate here. Let's make sure something's not right." Or maybe our misunderstanding, or another understanding from the sub, just making sure that that is addressed that way. Yes, that is, that is state law.
Mr. Brockmiller?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Al. I just want to say, don't mistake our quietness and our lack of questions for not knowing. We've been supplied all these papers, and we've done our research, so whenever...
I'm just, I'm just saying, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of times, it's a full-time job overseeing these construction projects. I mean, don't get me wrong, that you're not knowledgeable, but you have other jobs, responsibilities, trying to look after a construction project, especially when you're going to be doing a construction project that's multiple phases. We're not just, you're not just talking about building a building. You're talking about building roofs, fire alarms. It's, it's a huge task.
I would like to go back to the question about unions. We have, in the past, building projects here, we have always strived and tried to use union workers. But, I mean, you can attest to that, that we have done that, and that, that's important. And as we had visited with the various trades, unions, we, we had stressed to them, and got their support for that in the past, that we wanted to do that, and I think, I think we've done that, basically.
And I think they have, given the, the district, I know, in going out to their members, they've been highly, they have encouraged their members to vote for the propositions the school district has put forward.
One more thing. You go home in this community, okay, and Bill Giesing, and you have worked with project managers, and actually have worked as a project manager yourself at one time, and you've also been exposed to performance contracting. What are your thoughts for Farmington, Missouri?
For Farmington, Missouri? What Craig's method of construction, we're not competing entities. He provides a service that gets involved more upfront. If you were a private individual, you could get a general contractor involved upfront and go through all of that one. You're not. You're a public candidate, you can't do that. That's where, if you're asking me, if I were in your shoes, I think you need to seriously look at someone like this, that can sit down with you, working with the architect upfront, coordinating those issues, making sure you understand, assisting the architect with cost estimating, someone that might be just a little bit more knowledgeable of it, has had their hands in the fields a little bit more, and then during the construction project represents the school district, and then you go out and you hire a good general contractor. If you're asking my opinion, that's, that's the way I would perceive of it. Now, Jeff, you asked a question before. You asked, then the perception is, okay, so are we adding another layer of cost onto this? As Craig said, if you, if you're saving that money upfront, making sure you're getting, you aren't overpaying, no, I don't think you are layering a thing on. Plus, you're ensuring you're, you're going to get a better lifetime job, not just something you're going to get on your bid opening day, but twenty years from now, when you're talking about this project, okay, we might have paid five thousand dollars more to go to a higher-grade roof. Someone who can then lend a little bit more credence to that right now.
If I can piggyback on that, my recommendation would be, put the responsibility in the hands of the experts. General contractors' expertise is building construction. You know, we don't get involved in energy systems, the efficiency of those systems, which is the right system to put in, but through the design-build process, you're going to hire an architect and an engineer that does understand those things, and they know what the most efficient systems are, and they've taken your design intent, and they've incorporated that based upon how you want to allocate your priorities. Your priority may not be to have the most efficient building at the expense of less square footage, less amenities or features. You give the design intent to your architect, he's the expert in how to bring those design elements together, and he'll work with the expertise of that engineer to find out the right systems that's going to get you that balance of, how much do I want in my energy efficiency versus how much do I want in the design and configuration, or the look and appearance of the building? And then you turn over the actual construction to the expert, who is the general contractor, and that's their expertise. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone that came and participated in this. I'll come back over to the board.
And I would like to thank everybody's involvement tonight. Always appreciate the community's involvement in this process. That entertaining motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'm going to adjourn to closed session for a discussion of personnel pursuant to six one oh point zero two one, section three and thirteen.
Second?
Second.
Diana?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
On?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.